You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart, and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched with the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing, but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening and welcome to the February 9th Regular Fayetteville City Council Meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Melvin Moore from Kingdom Connection Church to come forward. Please lead us in prayer. And after the prayer, if we would remain standing, I'd like to pull the Boy Scouts up to the very front and lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. And following that, if you would still remain at the podium, I'd like to learn more about your mission.
Amen. To the mayor, City Council, and all of the elected officials for Fayetteville and Cumberland County, first of all, I want to thank for the opportunity to render the invocation before a group of elected officials that have a great responsibility in governing this great city. Let us pray. God, we ask that your hand be upon every member for total guidance in their decisions. We know that there is a call in the land to focus because society is caught in a web of distraction. Because there's a call to focus, eliminate the distractions and move upon your elected officials to come together and govern this city like never before in this season. God, your word says that all authority is ordained of you. And when we are focused, we are full of consistent and unlimited sight, not just on one issue, but all issues. Cause our elected officials to begin to understand that focus is the key. Focus is for you, focus is for me, and focus is all that we should see in coming together in our efforts to be productive officials. For there is a movement to focus, not just on the issues, but also on one another with the utmost respect in keeping the unity and the bond of peace that is needed in any meeting that truly desire to bring about change collectively. God, we thank you for the movement to focus in this community, for this generation, and the next generation. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Troop 709 and Troop 746. And they're going to come forward to the, uh, to the front here and lead us all with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Am I too old?
Will we all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Yes, leave.
Just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Pastor, tell us something about Kingdom Connection.
Oh, glory to God, how much time do I have?
One minute.
One, one minute, amen. I, um, I'm a pastor more from Kingdom Connection Ministry, originally from Memphis, Tennessee. And we started our ministry over on the north side of Fayetteville back in 2005. In which God blessed our ministry, after five years of being in ministry, he bought us a church over on the north side of Fayetteville on Mack Off the Road. And God has called us to this community, amen, to bring forth a message. And I just wanted to come down and introduce myself and let you know who I am and what the church is all about. But God really ministered to me about a couple of months ago. And he gave me a message that I think society is really looking forward to. And he woke me up one morning and he says, "There's a call in the land to focus." He said, "Because society is caught in a web of distraction." And so ever since he ministered that to me, it wasn't talking just to the church, but it was talking to all humanity, that there's a call for the society to get focused. Focus on anything that they are dealing with, because focus really is everything. Any success that you may have succeeded in, if you think about it, you were focused. And the things that you didn't succeed in, you were not focused. And so, you know, I just want to bring that message, amen. And God has told me that this has become a movement. And so it's become a movement for my ministry, and I want to make it a movement for the city of Fayetteville and abroad. We started the movement back in September of 2014. I've been ministering about focus from September until today. And God said, "Don't stop because it's bringing change." And what focus does, it brings the focus back to the individual to make them want to change. Amen.
Thank you, amen, thank you. Counsel, at this time, we'll go to the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Moore?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Have a second by Mr. Wright, thank you very much. Is there a discussion on the motion? Sing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Thought I was seeing things, we all have buttons, did you notice? Thank you, staff, for providing us buttons. Makes it much easier on the fingers. Next on the agenda, item 5.0, which is our announcements and recognitions. We do have a couple of recognitions. And I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem.
At this time, there'll be a proclamation present, presented to Mr. Rand, Randall Hume, Mr. Hume from the FAST Department. It'll be presented by Mayor Robertson. This proclamation is for Transit Customer Appreciation Day. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Fayetteville area's system of transit, FAST, has been tasked to provide safe, efficient, effective, reliable, courteous, innovative public transportation to the residents of Fayetteville. And whereas the use of transit services offered by FAST has increased over 58% in the last five years. Whereas approximately 6,000 customers use FAST, fixed route buses and Fast Track, pair transit vans each weekday to travel to and from work, school, medical appointments, social services, shopping, recreation, and other personal business. And whereas by using public transportation, people save money, help the environment, and improve the quality of our life. Whereas FAST wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to those faithful customers who have contributed to the success of public transportation in Fayetteville. And whereas FAST has selected Friday, February 13th, so this Friday, as a day to specially recognize its public transportation customers. Now therefore, Nat Robertson, the mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim February 13th, 2015 as Transit Customer Appreciation Day in the city of Fayetteville."
Counsel, since we have Mr. Hume up here, I'd like to point out a couple of the great things that not only have we done together with this great staff. Mr. Hume lives and breathes transit even when he's not at work, I know that for a fact. But we've, we've done some pretty remarkable things. Of course, we funded the, uh, the multimodal center. It has broken ground, looks good. We've expanded a number of FAST routes. And we've also connected with some neighbors. Mr. Hume, tell, uh, tell us just, just a minute about some of the, some of the really cool accomplishments we've made this year.
All right, well, thank you. We, because of what you have done with the budget, we've been able to add about three or four different routes this year. Two of them are going to Fort Bragg, which is a really good connection. We now have a direct connection also with Spring Lake Shuttle, which has made their system actually more productive because they're not driving all the way to the mall every day. And I think that last reported, they're, they've, they're getting about a 35, 36% increase in their usage. And so we doing that, we've done that. Another with a neighbor has been the Hope County Area Transit. And it's actually a serving in neighborhood which we were not able to get to with our current system. And so they didn't, do now have a bus that comes through the South Gate community as it comes up toward Clifftale. So we're, we're very excited about that and very excited about an opportunity to thank our customers. And I hope, as I said in the email, and I will send out another reminder, but I hope you'll come out either at the Transit Center, at the mall, or I'd like to go ride a bus with you. But come out and spend an hour with us or so and shake some hands and let our customers know how important they are to the success of our system.
And we have a special fair on Friday also, is that correct?
We're doing several things. We, we're going to have a special fair, 25 cents for all the rides, no matter what service it is. And we're also giving, uh, we're going to have some free coffee and doughnuts and some snacks and some giveaways of some passes. And so we hope to have a great day. The 25 cent fair, I think, is also an opportunity for some people to try FAST that normally don't, don't use our services. So I just thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Of course, our goal is to make FAST a system of choice rather than a system of need. So hopefully these things will help accomplish that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hume, for doing what you do. And at this point, Mr. Downing, Patrick M.G. Downing, welcome. I have a special certificate of recognition for you. It reads that this is to Patrick M.G. Downing for his outstanding leadership and dedicated service to Boy Scout Troop 709. And I would like to congratulate you on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. So congratulations.
I would like to give you Mayor Robertson the certificate from my ceremony.
That is great, thank you so much, Patrick. That will go in my office, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, keep up the good work.
Oh, come on, we'll take a minute.
Counsel, we do have several people here for the public forum tonight, so let me just go over the rules briefly. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice into what goes on in the city. Due to some policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the City Council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Currently, this evening, we have signed up more speakers than what the 30 minutes would allow normally. So I ask you if you would keep your comments to point, then everyone may have an opportunity to speak. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with a city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may appear later on in the agenda, well, actually, there's no public hearings tonight, so we'll skip that. When you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the lights located on the podium change from green to yellow, that's your indication, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time is expired. And again, due to our policy, we are unable to extend any time given. So with that being said, Madam Clerk?
May we have eight speakers signed up? The first speaker is Mr. Jeremy Stanley. Mr. Jeremy Stanley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jeremy Stanley. I reside at 3229 Sizemill Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm here tonight to ask for fairness on being unannexed from the city of Fayetteville on the decision y'all made of last year at the December meeting due to the fact of the waiver of the Cargill plant. And y'all allowing them not to be annexed into the city and able to hook the sewer and water with their new building getting built, which is a multi-million dollar facility that's only going to employ 10 people, where myself had stated before that I would be hiring seven to 10 people. Cargill is actually 4.7 miles from this address right here on Hay Street. My shop is 5.8 miles from this address here on Hay Street. They're even closer to me, and y'all are allowing them to build and expand. And my new business, as being a small business owner, I'm just trying to get started. The taxes on the property that y'all quoted in this form last year, it come up and y'all actually charged me more and then backdated the taxes six months prior to being annexed in as of January 1st, which was another bill of 600 and some dollars to be annexed into the city of Fayetteville. The taxes that y'all quoted me, David Nash quoted $3,594 on this printout that y'all handed me last year. My taxes was 3,704 plus additional $600 for this year, for 2014 taxes, because they said where y'all annexed me in after January 1st, the way the tax season goes in. So I'm asking to be removed from the city of Fayetteville. I've tested the water, I can put a well in, I do not have to hook the PWC, or I can hook the PWC. But I don't think that I'm being treated fair as a small business owner trying to get started when y'all, when a multi-million dollar company is able to be waived from being annexed into the city to expand. We'll have staff follow up with you on, in reference to some of the funding that you were speaking of. Yes, sir, and one other thing, real quick. Y'all stated December, the, the, the December meeting 2014, that my mom had received a letter that I would be annexed into the city of Fayetteville. There, um, I have documentation that everything comes, I've got a letter saying that y'all would, that any farther permits or anything, I needed, I needed to come to the city. My mom has not ever received anything from Cumberland County, nor a certified letter from the city or Cumberland County or PWC since we've been at that address at, uh, since 2003.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Consuela Mines.
Hello, thank you for being here, Mr. Mayor and everyone here. My name is Consuela Moselle Mines. I'm from Fayetteville, I am a homeless person right now. I am so grateful to come before you today. Why I'm coming before you today is because I love my country. I am a dependent of two outstanding honorable military persons. One was in the Air Force and one was in the Army. I grew up under strict rules. I love rules, they're the boundaries of life. I love children, I love teaching, and I have a number of skills under my belt. The reason why I'm here today is I'm a former employer, employee of Goodyear Tire Rubber Company. And I'm aware that they are not in the district. But I sold myself to them. I filled out an application and they hired me on the spot, took three months, the regular three months. In that time, they asked for my assistance to help them in raising monies, in collecting benevolence, United Way, and a host of other things. I enjoyed my job as safety coach, and safety is number one for me. I give honor, if you would just give me a second. That was for my Lord. I'm here today, and everything inside of me is by God's grace and His mercy. Everything's been taken from me because of an act of integrity. Speaking is a very important fundamental skill of communication in America. And from what I observe, we always have a problem in how we present ourselves. And that's become a problem when we look at it and we see it, what's going on on TV, how everyone is affected. I would like to apologize to City Hall. I'd like to apologize to my police department and everyone that I may have offended in this terrible time of grief. I was betrayed. I was mistreated. I was abandoned. I was victimized, and I was abused. And unfortunately, because my immediate employer wasn't available, I took what was necessary for me to show proof of the abuse, and it cost me my job. Since then, I've lost my home, the investment of my 401K, and I am due to court next week for trespass violation. The reason why I was there was only for self-representation because I've lost everything. I am full of skill, and I ask that anybody that can help me, give me a chance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Leslie Parker.
Good evening, my name is Leslie Parker. I reside at 7658 Glenbrook Road. I'm here tonight to request a revision of a portion of the city code in order to allow for storage of small boats and single axle trailers on residential property, either in a side yard or in a driveway. Typically, in the off boating season, my husband and I have stored our boat in our side yard. And likewise, during boating months, we keep our boat in the driveway for easier access. However, on January 6th of this year, we received a warning letter from the city for our boat being parked in our driveway. Our leisure boat is on a single axle trailer and is approximately 19 feet long, smaller than most SUVs and trucks currently on the road. The notice that we received stated that we were only allowed to park our boat in our backyard and six feet away from our property lines. However, we have no way to store our boat in our backyard. The privacy fence openings on either side of our house are not wide enough for our boat to fit properly and nor can the fence be weighed wide enough for it to fit through. The only other option is for us to be fined by the city or to pay for our boat to be stored elsewhere, which is cost prohibitive at 70, between $45 and $70 a month. In addition, it does not allow for access, easy access to our boat. Our issue with the city code does not stop there. We were recently visited by the city code enforcement officer a second time to see if we had received our notice because he noticed our boat still remaining in our driveway. He explained to us that, we explained to him that our matter would be taken up with the City Council as to this evening. And while speaking with the gentleman, we began discussing various other types of city code violations. He gave an example of our single axle trailer, our utility trailer, sitting in our driveway and that it was okay and it was not in any violation. However, if we were to put a four-wheel vehicle on it, a four-wheeler or an ATV, that would be considered at that point as a whole to be a recreational vehicle and thus in violation of the city code. We actually do have a four-wheeler, but it was not on the utility trailer at the time. When I looked up the city code that we recited for, Article 30-4, Section D, Subsection 3, T3, I found it to be somewhat ambiguous. I found the purpose of the code to be, to be to prohibit the storage of heavy trucks, trailers, and/or major recreational equipment because the presence of such vehicles quotes runs contrary to the intended residential character of our neighborhoods. However, given the intended purpose, it seems to me that the way that this is being enforced is contrary to the overall purpose of why the city originally chose to adopt this code to begin with. Isn't the code designed to attract people to our community to ensure our neighborhoods aren't cluttered with commercial or overly large vehicles? Wouldn't the citizens that you are trying to attract and keep also include the pastimes and hobbies of those same residents? The term "major recreational vehicles" is somewhat vague. What is major? The title of this section of the code would one, would lead one to assume that the city is trying to restrict larger or more commercial vehicles. I understand that the city is trying to design a code that ensures our neighborhoods are aesthetically pleasing and desirable places to live. However, this part of the code is restricted to those who have us, who are already living here and for future residences. After all, don't you want citizens that live in Fayetteville not only to reside, but also to actually live in our city? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker, perfectly timed.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Adam Parker. Okay, not here this evening. Our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinhold.
Mr. Reinhold, good afternoon, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, good evening. My name is Jerry Reinhold, 516 Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28311. I come before you tonight to highlight an item from last Thursday's non-televise City Council work session. Compliments to the city staff on the planned debut later this month on INCODE 360. The INCODE 360 program is one of those initiatives buried in the Fayetteville 2014-2015 annual budget. Citizens should know that this application will greatly ease wading through the Fayetteville Code of Ordinances and especially the hundreds of pages of the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, and its dozens of changes. Making the UDO user-friendly should greatly benefit developers and others who want to learn how to do business in Fayetteville. Congratulations city staff for a job well done and responding to citizen concerns on the challenge of working with the UDO. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Ronnie Peel. Mr. Ronnie Peel. Our next speaker is Ms. Julia Cooper.
Welcome, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council persons. My name is Julia Faircloth Cooper, and I live at 402 Northview Drive in Fayetteville. I'm here to speak about the proposal for offering the opportunity for folks to register their home parties to prevent some violence. And I certainly understand the need for that, if that's working. My concern with that is that folks really won't do that. But I think I have another proposal that might work a little better and would piggyback or partner with... or partner with something that's already in place. And that is to set up a website where folks could order, I'm sorry, where folks could register to let the law enforcement know that they're going to be out of town, if they have teenagers or young, you know, young adults staying at the home, to let them know that as well. I was one of those kids, okay, that if there was a party in this town when I was growing up, I was there. And that is where a lot of underage drinking went on, and it's where there was potential for a lot of things to happen. Having the opportunity to know that a parent would call and ask law enforcement to go by and check in my absence, not only would allow for me to feel a little safer, knowing that law enforcement was going to come by and check if I was staying at home without my parent, but it would also prevent me from having a party. We had a friend in the neighborhood whose mother went to dog shows every weekend, and that's where the party was. We knew where to get alcohol. That's what we did. It didn't stop for three years until somebody moved in next door and notified law enforcement. So I think if you could expand that process that's already in place, if folks want to register parties, by all means, let them do that. I just don't think they're going to, you know, to any real degree. But I think if you could let law enforcement know, going to be gone, got a teenage kid at home, ride by, check, I think that might help curb some of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Donald Agel.
Good evening.
Hello, welcome.
Donald Agel, I reside at 1461 Thelbert Drive in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm trying to appeal to the city council to stop a demolition order of my family's property, 1090 Essex Place. I hear it stating that I refuse to repair the structure. I'm a North Carolina state licensed home inspector. I bought the property in the condition that it is in and planned on fixing my structure. I spent $60,000 putting money into this structure. I would like to fix my structure. City is pushing forward and sending inspectors to the property who have kicked in the front door, demolished the front door and front door locks, doing asbestos inspection without notifying me prior, and sent me a bill for $450 to the address less than 20 houses away that they could have asked me for access. But please, I ask you, the city council, to stop this order and give me a chance to repair my property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, counsel, we'll move into the consent agenda. Item 7.0, Mr. Arp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've moved that we would approve the consent agenda with one modification, that item 7.04 be pulled.
We're just pulling that for discussion, Mr. Arp?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Crisp? Any discussion on the motion, counsel? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's nine to one with Mr. Colvin voting against. Oh, you want to re-vote? We'll push your green, then we'll just make it unanimous. There we go. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. These buttons are a little loose. Maybe we need some super glue on the new buttons. Item 7.04, we have pulled for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the council on item 7.4 award contract for the purchase of three automated slide, excuse me, side loader refuse trucks, that we would table that motion until after the April discussion, where we have a review coming back to discuss the potential for contract services for sanitation pickup.
Second.
That's Mr. Arp, Mr. Moan, counsel discussion on the motion. All right, seeing none, I'll ask for your vote again. You will maybe do some math, aren't you? Madam Clerk, that is six to four. Those voting against, council members Wright, council member Colvin, council member Hurst, council member McDougal. Those voting in favor, council members Crisp, council member Jensen, council member Arp, Robertson, Mayor Protim Davy, and council member Moan. Counsel, this looks like this might be your favorite time of the meeting. Yes, sir. We're in 8.0, other business. Staff, you have anything for us? All right, counsel, I'll...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There we go. First and second. Thank you.[1735.76]